I'm not me. Finn Clum. Hi, Cora.
Hi, Cora.
Seven oh four, call meeting to order. You guys hear me okay? Steve. Can you? Is that any better? There you go. Okay, thanks. First order of business, we need to elect a temporary town clerk for the meeting. Position of town clerk is vacant. Section fourteen of chapter forty-one of the general laws requires that in the absence of a permanent town clerk and town meeting, first order of business is to elect an elected ballot of a temporary town clerk. The temporary clerk will have the same powers as and perform the duties of a town clerk with respect to town meeting. The board understands that Karen Hopper is willing and able to perform the duties of town clerk tonight. For the election, the town meeting is required to conduct, personally receiving majority of all votes. Present and voting is declared a winner. Therefore, if there is only one person taken nomination, only one vote will be required to elect the temporary town clerk. If there are no objections, Karen Hopper shall serve as town clerk for this evening's annual town meeting, subject to the nomination and election as such. Do I have the nomination for Karen Hopper to act as temporary town clerk for the purpose of this meeting?
I nominate town clerk Karen Hopper as temporary town clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Here none, I declare the nominations closed and we're asked for both to confirm the nomination. Do I hear a motion that chairman of the selectmen cast one ballot for Karen Hopper?
So moved.
Second. Our last vote on motion that chair of the select board cast one ballot. All in favor? The chair of the select board will cast one ballot and review the ballot and declare the results from the election. I declare that Karen Hopper has been elected temporary town clerk and will administer the oath of office. Please raise your hand. He saw us ready or patiently and entirely performed his duties of the office of temporary town clerk, which you have been elected. Okay, now we can get to regular business. Article one, see if the town will accept reports of town officers that are printed in the annual town report or take any action relative thereto. Would you like to do with this article?
Consent warrant, the consent warrant is intended. Article one, I move that the town vote to accept the reports of town officers as printed in the annual town report.
It has been moved in second and that the town vote to accept the reports of town officers printed in the annual town report. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Article two through seven will be done as a consent warrant. The consent warrant is intended to expedite the business of town meeting by combining routine, non-controversial, predictable articles and seeking in one motion approval on all articles. There will be no debate or discussion unless there is a question, we move an article to be discussed from the consent warrant. I'll read the articles. And we will move. I move that town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all like the officers of the town as provided for by chapter forty-one, section one oh eight. Article three, I move that the town vote to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow in anticipation of revenue for the twelve-month period beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, and to renew any note or notes that may be given for a period of less than one year. Article four, I move that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into agreements with the town vote of Massachusetts, the bond of transportation for the construction, reconstruction, and improvement of town roads. Article five. See what compensation the town will allow for personnel and equipment used in repairing highways and opening roads to engine men and/or firemen employed for the purpose of fire protection and for police officers employed for the purpose of police protection during the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, or take any action relative thereto. Article six, to see if the town will vote to accept any sum of money received from the town vote of Massachusetts pursuant to the provisions of chapter nine of the Massachusetts general laws and authorize the treasurer to expend such funds for the purposes authorized, including maintaining, repairing, improving, and constructing waste up to the reimbursable amount according to the provisions of said chapter nine. Such funds to be spent with the approval of the board of selectmen and vast department of transportation or take any action relative thereto. Article seven, see if the town will vote pursuant to general laws, chapter forty-four subsection fifty-three E and one half as most recently amended to establish the annual expenditure limits for fiscal year twenty twenty-five for all revolving funds listed in section F for the revolving fund bylaw. Chapter twenty twenty-three, the general bylaws has set forth the law with such expenditure amounts to the capital fiscal year, fiscal year, unless the town meeting boasts prior to July first in any year to revise such expenditure. Fort health, twenty thousand dollars. Building inspector, fifty thousand. Plumbing inspector, five thousand. Wiring inspector, fifty thousand. Deputy collector, eight thousand. Landing board, five thousand. Doning board of appeals, three thousand. Treasurer, five thousand. Counselor on agents, ten thousand. Take any action relative thereto. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Article eight, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds sum of money to the free charges and expenses and transfer a sum of money from the free cash to the general operating budget of the town for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four or take any action relative thereto. This article includes the school budget.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate four million, six hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars and to transfer one hundred seventy thousand dollars and three cents from free cash for a total appropriation of four million, eight hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars and three cents, as is necessary to pay salaries, expenses, and outlays of the several town departments and to be allocated as itemized in the table attached for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four.
Second?
Second.
It has been moved in second and that the town vote to raise and appropriate four million, six hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars and to transfer one hundred seventy thousand and three cents from free cash for total appropriation of four million, eight hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars and three cents as necessary to pay salaries, expenses, and outlays of the several town departments to be allocated as itemized in the table attached for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four. Any discussion?
Dennis.
Yep.
Michelle Bertrand, Northbrook Field Road.
Could you set up the microphone?
Michelle Bertrand, Northbrook Field Road. Wondering why are you guys combining the school budget with the regular town budget? It's, this is the first time this has ever happened.
Thank you for the question, fair question. I was really, two factors first, our town, town recommended it, that's the practice followed by almost all towns unless there is a issue in recommending the school budget or the town budget. So last year as an example, you may recall, I spoke, I'll say, probably at Bynum, talking about the school budget, and we actually considered not funding it and we considered only funding the minimum requirement for the school budget. This year when we started the budget process, and if you don't want to take a minute, I'll give you what led up to it. Uh, with the town budget started, the requests from all the town departments ended up to a little over ten percent increase for the town. With the school budget had what they call their first pass in the budget, they also had a little over ten percent increase in the budget versus twenty twenty-four. After a lot of hard work by the board of selectmen, finance committee, maybe the department hits in the town, we have presented tonight a budget that has a three point oh eight or three point one percent increase. The school went through a similar process, a civil heartburn, I'm assuming, and they came back ultimately with a budget of a three point three percent increase down from the ten percent. Uh, the finance committee voted to say we would recommend the entire budget be funded as one item. Again, with the support recommendation from the town and town, that would be kind of best practices that we probably have been following in all the past years. Said that it's, it is all part of the town budget. If we aren't going to strike them out, it's why I spend time voting on each one separately. It's that, it was that simple. You got it, hope?
Yes.
We have discussion?
Ruth Colette, Ruth Colette, Northbrook Field Road, I just have one question. Could you tell me how much it costs per student to justify this? Like, I'd like to know how many students we're paying for that includes this amount of money and, you know, I'd like to know what the breakdown is. Do you know, have that number, please? Am I asking the right question? What's the cost per student? Thank you.
Do you have it, Alan?
I'll let the school speak with me. Yeah, I'll speak at the Pathfinder, just, just so you'll know that Pathfinder School, if you can hear me, uh, they did have an increase in number of students this year. So we now have fourteen students attending Pathfinder, and I'll let the folks in Quabon speak to the Quabon numbers.
The enrollment of this budget is built for two thousand, one hundred and ninety-one students. Two thousand, one hundred and ninety-one.
From Ocam though specifically?
Uh, yeah, I can, Sean and Mort can like, what that was accurate.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're, it was correct.
Two hundred and twenty-four.
Two hundred and twenty-four.
Speak to the microphone.
So she said for Ocam is two hundred and twenty-four students that we had. Apologies.
Could you go?
Alabakas?
Put the microphone, please.
Alabakas, Ocam. With that amount being eighty-five oh twenty-seven seventy-five, is it just per student? Or is it breakdown from salaries versus expenses for the school? Is part of that salaries?
Yes. Our budget includes everything, all our operating expenses.
Okay, but the difference between expenses versus salaries being operating budget for the school or salaries for teachers, staff, et cetera?
It's all included.
Okay, but what part is portioned out? The, the reason why I ask, I look at this book. I don't know if anyone's looked at the book, do you? Lot? I'm sorry, look at the book, line item, expenses, salaries. There's a lot of stipends, there's other expenses for teachers. I don't know if anyone else calculated out how many teachers get over eighty thousand a year? How many teachers get over a hundred thousand a year? It's quite a bit. If you look at the book, and that's why we question the school salary going up every year. And I guess that's why I'm questioning.
I'm happy to speak to that. I'm Colleen Muham, the superintendent of Quabon, this just about to finish my first year.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. But teacher salaries is a great question. So we have collective bargaining agreements with all of our working groups. And so what I want to say about teacher salaries is that depending on longevity, how long teachers have been with us, depending on their greet, degrees that they have, the credits that they have, that's why the salaries are different. We have lower teachers on the salary scale and we have higher teachers on the salary scales. Some of our teachers work additional days and that increases their salary amounts. Yep.
How many, how many teachers per student are there or a staff within the school? Is it a one-to-one ratio? Is it a one-to-two ratio? Is it?
We, we, you'd have to give us time to get that information for you. I don't have that off the top of my head and I wouldn't want to misspeak.
It just seems like the budget every year for the school keeps going up and up and up, which is more than fifty percent of our salary or our budget, line and budget for the town. And we're wondering, when will it level fund? All these municipalities in the area for this budget get level funded or reduce their budgets because the school goes up. So we sacrifice our municipality employees to fund the school. So it'd be nice to be able to hire full-time employees in town or do other things for the town as opposed to keep monies into the school. So I don't know if that's a thing that you can even ever do is level fund it. I know.
I'm happy to speak to this year, so I appreciate you asking me that. And I just want to say that hopefully the, uh, your town officials feel like we have worked with them on this. This feels weird for me to speak forward when you're all behind, so I apologize. But certainly, we know the hardships that all of our towns, we have five towns, you're one of five, right? So we understand what everybody's going through and also the funding formula. There are problems or challenges at the state level with the way that schools are funded, especially regional rural schools. So we've been working really hard. This budget actually includes cuts of fifteen point four staff members. So it is not without going through a fine-tooth comb and looking at positions as well as expenses. So we have worked really hard to try and call that budget back, but it also includes increases in our expenses. So a, a huge increase for us is regional school transportation, that went up eighteen percent. But I also have to tell you, like you're having for your towns and in your homes, everything from tennis balls for our tennis teams increased a hundred percent. So our costs have really skyrocketed. So given that, you know, we really are trying to work with the towns collectively and collaboratively to, um, take a good hard look at our school budget. But I do appreciate the question and I know lots of people are thinking it, so thank you.
Colleen, I could just add a couple of comments. The finance committee and board of selectmen spent a lot of time on the school budget. Um, we had private meetings where, like the private, the public meetings, when we had finance committee meeting, board of selectmen meetings, where the individuals from the school came and presented their budget. Those were fairly lengthy meetings, a lot of questions were asked. Um, there's follow-up emails, we're still waiting on a couple of questions that are hanging out there, but they, a lot of these questions are addressed by the board of selectmen and finance committee when we're in those meetings. Those are open to the public. The school committee meetings, Quabon, or Quabon complex, C. Donald Drive lead from the finance committee participated in every one of them. I was involved in some of them. A lot of times that is via Zoom versus being live. And the final thing I just added is, um, there is a lot of work in looking over the town budget and the school budget. The finance committee right now, this is my commercial, by the way. Um, the finance committee has three members, we already know. It has a town bylaws, so we can have five members. So if there's anyone here tonight that has questions about how the budget is reviewed, how it's put together, how the school budget is put together, you have interest in the numbers, we are here tonight just to let everyone know, we really would like a couple of volunteers to step up and join the finance committee for the twenty twenty-five year. So if you're interested, um, you know, we have a place for you.
Hi, good afternoon. Uh, my question is just actually per, oh, Jim Albano from Ulter Pike Road. Um, what is the actual, we know what the number is now, per student? What is the cost per student for the town of Ocam? And how does it compare to other towns in the area?
Okay.
I think I can clarify someone that's with you for this district. Yes. My name is Claire Hendra from Lingan Road. Two things, let me ask this question, that'll help to clarify the answer for you. And then is, are we still indebted to the state?
Yes.
Yes, we are. Are we indebted by about how much, five million dollars? It used to be about five million we were in debt.
Two point six billion.
Okay, so it's going down. So what that means is this, it means that the state has formulas that apply to all across the state of Massachusetts. And they have all kinds of categories. And this is what they're talking about funding, some of those categories, the formulas that determine how much money you're going to get are outdated, and that's what they've been funding at the state level. So like Quabon, like any other, um, school district, the state has different categories. You get so much money for students that are in need, you get so much money for handicapped children, you get so much money for children that fall into poverty, you get so much money for maintenance, you get for electricity, so on and so forth. They have all those categories. And those formulas apply to all schools uniformly across the state. So then you come up, the total amount of money, and that is divided by the number of students that the school district turns into the state in October.
That's a total school district of all towns.
That would be, and it's broken down, you can break it down by towns, but it adds up to a total amount because they're giving you a total amount.
So if we had ten students in this town, the next year, whatever happened, we'd be paying the same amount.
You're not paying that. No, no, hear me out. Let me hear, hear me out, okay? Because we're not done yet. So that determines how much the state is going to give you.
Okay.
So when I asked Cheryl, how much are we indebted to the state? What she is saying is, the state only owes us, it's going to be less than sixteen million dollars because women are on sixteen million for a very long time. They only owe us, say, maybe thirteen million. And now they go and they look and they say, oh, you're getting less than what you got previous year. We can't have you take three million dollar cut, five million dollar cut. Therefore, we will hold you harmless. And you will get what you got the previous year. And the reason for that is, they come up with a, a amount of money per student and we have had falling population.
Correct, that is, that's my question.
And you.
Population and an increase in school budget every year.
And so the state is saying, you're only entitled to thirteen million. So you'd have a much bigger increase, but they're going to hold you harmless, they'll hold you at sixteen. And usually they give you a little bit more money than that, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty dollars per student. And that is all the money you're going to get from the state. Then you come to the second part of the revenue, because now we're talking revenue stream, we're not talking expense. Revenue stream. The next revenue stream is main contribution per town. The state will tell you as a town, how much you're going to, how much you have to pay to your school district. And no, it's not based upon income and it's not based upon your real estate property taxes. It's based upon what you paid the previous year increased by your, by your growth. And the growth figures go to the state based upon what we have submitted as figures from this town to the state. And so our growth has usually been three percent. So then they multiply what you did last year by three percent and say, you, Ocam, you will give to the Quabon district, not the Quabon district, but to the school districts, that amount of money. And then they say, how many students do you have? How many are going to Pathfinder? How many are going to Quabon? That's a percentage, ten percent go to Pathfinder, Pathfinder gets ten percent of the money. Quabon gets ninety percent of the money. And then what money, so that's how much money you have to give as mandated by state. And what the state is, was striving for at one point in time, and I don't know if they still are, they want all towns to pick up at least fifty-five percent of the cost of their schooling. That's number one. Then number two, you take a look at whatever revenue the Quabon is getting, the sixteen million plus the little money that you're going to get on this side from the state, maybe twenty, thirty thousand more they'll give you. Okay, and then they take a look at what their expenses are. And the bus transportation. Yep.
So you're saying that right now at fifty-five percent, or two hundred and sixty-nine students plus ten more, seventy-nine students, we are not at the fifty percent level with the current budget?
No, we're not. Because they will say you're not at fifty-five because it's based upon the foundation, it's based upon the foundation budget, which is another figure they come up with. We're not at fifty-five percent, I know we're not at fifty-five percent, we were never at fifty-five percent.
You're not at.
And you, and you should count yourself lucky because if you were in the east, you'd have to be eighty-seven percent, eighty-three percent. You would have to pay eighty-three percent, the eastern towns pay eighty-three percent. So once they figure out what they have for money, what they figure what their expenses are, they know how much we're contributing, the rest is school assessment, which is based upon the number of students you have in your.
Correct, but is the question is, that is currently with the regional school system.
Yep.
And going, but the question would be if we separated from the school system on our own and did it on our own.
Yep.
What would the cost be? Student for the town of Ocam?
Here's what I would say, you would be in big trouble because that's what they did in Worthington. They split off from the regional school district. First, they had to pay the regional school district for any outstanding money that they owed for improvements that were doing the regional school system. They had to pay that, I think they had to cough up two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then they had to submit an education plan to the state. This is how. This was Worthington.
Worthington, where are they located, Worthington, after we get up?
That's in Western Mass.
Okay. I want to see what their numbers are, I'm going to look them up afterwards.
Well, you look them up because what happened is nearly bankrupted a town.
You're nearly bankrupt now.
No, you're not bankrupt. In fact, I was very encouraged because I saw your figures, Alan, and it said, school budget is sixty percent of our budget.
It is true.
That is an improvement. It used to be sixty-six. And when I would go to finance committee meetings, they would tell us, not our meetings, but statewide, generally, your school budget would be sixty-six percent of your budget. They are the biggest employer in your area. So sixty-six is the common amount for towns except for, well, probably not, probably, no, I won't say that for the eastern towns because eastern towns have to pay a lot more than we do. But generally, towns across, um, the state of Massachusetts, sixty-six percent of the budget, it is the biggest school budget they have. Now, when Worthington split off, what they found out was now they had to fund things. They funded as a community across the region. They had to fund the nurses. They had to fund, um, maintenance, they had to fund computer services. They had to fund the, the maintenance staff, they couldn't share them any longer. Um, so, and also another thing about education is if a child moves into your town that needs special education, the region pays for that special education if they cannot accommodate it in the region. And I know when I was on the finance committee, Quabon was working hard to beef up their special education because they wanted to avoid the expense of sending them out of town. But if you have to spend them out of town, a disabled child, you will pay for it, one hundred percent. That'll be a quarter of a million dollars alone. So what happened to Worthington, they got a real wake-up call when they found out that they now had to pick up all these costs. They didn't know how they were going to pick them up. Your cost right now is around eleven thousand, nine hundred, maybe twelve thousand dollars per student?
That's, that's correct, they're just under twelve.
Just under twelve. You will see that skyrocket. You will see that skyrocket because you're sharing expenses across five towns. Am I wrong, Cheryl? All right. So to move, to take, our, our school is underpopulated for one thing. So to move, to take our, our school is underpopulated, for one thing. That's the problem. We have five schools, we don't have enough kids. The school number of population has been going down. When I was on the finance committee, I don't know how many years ago, I was on it for ten years, it was a ski slope, down. We tried to do a prediction about, would it go up? Down. It's still down. We don't have the children.
It's on the screen up here, we're trying to keep up with you, but you're.
Oh, thank you, sorry.
Giving the, very good.
But you got it, it's down, right? You got it down.
I've been down twenty. And it's down fourteen, fireworks down by five, Braintree's down by twelve. We're down as a total as a district, twenty-seven students, which is one point three nine percent, right?
Now, think of this, you're supporting five elementary schools, a high school and a middle school. And the number of students are going down, means the state's going to give you less money. Because you don't have as many students. And what they will say to you is this, they'll say, oh, you want to have five elementary schools and you only have enough children for three? Too bad. Because we give you so much money for maintenance. We give you so much money for this, so much money, too bad. And I remember Charlie Baker, when I was listening to him on the radio, and a lady in Boston came up and said they were closing her school in Boston.
I'm asking questions, I'm not here to get berated.
I'm not berating you. I just get really upset about it, because it's hard to understand. You try to put in simplistic terms.
Well, yeah, but none of these people here understand that.
Are you getting closer to understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
But nobody's explained that to specific numbers. All we know is per student, we see numbers going up. Every year, our students are going down and our costs are going up.
And they will go up as long as costs are going up, and as long as we are being held in a, hold harmless with the state.
The problem is, when we get to, when we reach the tipping point, what do we do?
Well, you're not at the tipping point.
When we, eventually it's going to go that way.
I've been looking at some of the town finances, and you're not at the tipping point. Not by a long shot. No, you got a million dollars in stabilization funds. Municipal, uh, the finance departments, the, the state um, DLS, their finance arm would say, and had said, in fact, when we had a municipal audit, you should be holding no more than ten percent of your budget in stabilization funds.
In a little fluff tragedy.
Yeah, but I wanted to know, we're not going to go bankrupt tomorrow.
I know.
Okay, well, I understand. Let me tell you, I understand. But as a town, we're not close.
I'd like to move to the vote.
All right.
Thanks, Megan.
Second.
Favor. Okay. We will vote on the article. Ball of favor. Opposed? Motion passes. Article nine. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available cash the sum of money to be added to the assessive revaluation stabilization account, or taking the action relative there too. What would you like to do with this article?
I move that the town vote to transfer six thousand dollars from free cash to the assessors revaluation stabilization account.
Second. Second.
It's been moved in second that the town votes to transfer six thousand dollars in the general stabilization account to the assessive revaluation stabilization account. Any discussion? All those in favor? Both? Motion passes. Article ten. See if the town will vote to create an Ocam Center School Capital Stabilization Account, or take any action relative there too. Would you like to do with this article?
I move to have the town vote to create an Ocam Center School Capital Stabilization Account.
Second.
It's been moved in second to have the town vote to create an Ocam Center School Capital Stabilization Account. Is there any discussion?
I have to ask a question. Okay, so this is my question. Um, our, oh, sorry. Fire Hendra at Lincoln Road. Um, we have a capital stabilization account. Currently, I think at around four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And when we set up that capital stabilization account, it was so that we could save for an ambulance replacement uh, to buy new police uh, vehicles. Uh, and um, it was a third, oh, and a new fire truck. So now we're going to, we're buying a, we have a fire truck, and we're going to finance that through debt and capital exclusion. Uh, we have a stabilization account for the police cruiser. And we don't need to buy an ambulance anymore, because we are um, using Rutland. So my question is, what are the plans for four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars? And why can't we use that capital account for repairs on the center school? Instead of creating another stabilization account? And I could tell from the letter that we got that there's some stress about funding or stabilization accounts. So this will relieve some of that stress, too. If we say, here we have a capital account, the purposes for which it was established have gone away. Can't we just use money in that account for the school?
Somebody like to answer that?
Sure.
So Claire, to start, you did recount history, I don't quite remember, but not also appearing, you say this, that that was when you were on it ten, fifteen years ago now.
No, not that long, but a long time ago.
Um, really the rationale was the school has come to us, and uh, we met with their building people. And they said, we've got some fairly significant expenses coming up. And the finance committee, the board of selectmen, have no more discussions on it. It really was, okay, we know we've got a problem. We want to make sure everyone understands there's a problem at the Ocam Center School. Um, let's set the money specifically for that, so that we start putting that money into that, because I'm told that it could be um, well north of fifty, maybe as much as a hundred thousand dollars, from some of the numbers I've heard put out there, and it's all said and done. Uh, so I don't get any comments on it, but I think he probably was more involved than anyone, and I think that's a range we're looking at. And it was just a decision that, okay, let's, let's, let's have a separate account for it, so it's in front of everyone, so everyone knows we are putting this towards the school for specific reasons, and we're not just suddenly going to pull it out of general and say we have to pull it out, and everyone goes, we're surprised, we never knew it was going to be these kind of expenses. So it really kind of made it more visible, more transparent is all it is. Um, I don't think it matters, from an accounting perspective or any other to anyone else, just to make it clarity of this is where some of the money is designated to be spent going forward.
And if you did that, then it would make sense to fund it out of capital.
I think that's what the next motion is.
From capital? That was just to fund it. So anyhow, that was my question.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Both? Motion passes. Article eleven. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds to fund the Ocam Center School Capital Stabilization Account, or take any action relative there too. What would you like to do with this article?
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash fifteen thousand dollars to fund the Ocam Center School Capital Stabilization Account.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the town votes to transfer from capital stabilization fifteen thousand dollars to fund the Ocam Center School Capital Stabilization Account. Any discussion? All those in favor? Both? Motion passes. Article twelve. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds to sum of money as a grant from Wachusett Greenways Incorporated, an eight-town collaborative to continue its work to create and maintain trails for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four. And in connection therewith, to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into a grant agreement with such collaborative on such terms and conditions as the board deems appropriate. For the purposes set forth therein, we'll take any action relative there too. What would you like to do with this article?
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash one thousand dollars as a grant for Wachusett Greenways Inc., an eight-town collaborative to continue its work to create, maintain trails for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four. And in connection therewith, to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into a grant agreement with such collaborative for the purposes set forth herein.
Second.
Article twelve's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Matthew Brunel, Maple Street. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town of Ocam amend the motion that the town of Ocam put the funds one thousand dollars for the Wachusett Greenways Inc. into the finance committee's reserve fund or into this year's fiscal twenty twenty-five budget to further balance the operating budget of the town of Ocam.
Second.
Second.
Got a copy?
Yeah.
It's been moved in second that the town of Ocam put the funds one thousand dollars for the Wachusett Greenways Incorporated into the finance committee's reserve fund or into this year's fiscal twenty twenty-five budget to further balance the operating budget of the town of Ocam. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Down.
Yeah, my hand goes down. All those in favor? Raise your right hand.
Just go by, we'll go by rows, so that we're not like, saying the whole time. So you're going to get this out, right?
The article's been amended to take the one thousand dollars from that article and put it into the finance committee's reserve fund to this year's fiscal twenty twenty-five budget to further balance the operating budget of the town of Ocam.
Is it the twenty twenty-four budget or twenty twenty-five budget? They want to be in the reserve fund. This year's.
Twenty twenty-four.
Be the twenty twenty-five budget. That, that'll take effect July first.
We should be just voting on whether we accept the amendment first, not whether we approve it.
Right.
Yeah.
Get a, get a top favor. All those opposed, raise your right hand.
Fifty against.
Your be nothing fails.
Okay, I want.
So we'll go back to the original article. Is there any other discussion?
Uh, Matthew Brunel, eighty-seven, Maple Street. Um, we all received the letter from the finance committee saying that they were going to be balancing the budget, and we voted on it tonight to use a hundred seventy thousand dollars and three cents. Um, that's free cash, that's money that we aren't guaranteed to have. So if we're able to knock that down by a thousand dollars, I know a thousand dollars is a thousand dollars. Um, that is a lot of money for some people in town. Um, and it goes on your taxes. It's not money that free cash, it's not money that we're guaranteed to have next year. And we already, um, in the budget, the reserve account for the finance committee has already been decreased by ten thousand, so we're down from forty thousand to thirty thousand.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the original article? Both? No? Motion passes. Article thirteen. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds sum of money as allowed by General Laws, Chapter forty-four, subsection five B, to an account known as the Police Department Vehicle Stabilization Account. Take any action relative there too. What would you like to do with this article?
I move that the town transfer from free cash eleven thousand dollars as allowed by Mass General Law, Chapter forty, section five B, to an account known as the Police Department Vehicle Stabilization Account.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the town vote to transfer from the capital stabilization account, eleven thousand dollars allowed by Mass General Law, Chapter forty, section five B, to an account known as the Police Department Stabilization, Vehicle Stabilization Account. Any discussion?
Whoever starts, can you just come up to the microphone?
Just a question for clarity, Laura McGuire, Robinson Road. Can you please explain, committee, what uh, free cash is and how it's different from capital stabilization fund? And how much money is in cash? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, Lori Barcas, Town Attorney. Um, free cash is the leftover unencumbered balance at the end of the fiscal year, so it's the over revenues, and it's the excess of what's left in your unexpended expenditures. So free cash is certified by the state when I close the fiscal year every year. Um, and I think the difference, the question was the difference in capital stabilization. So capital stabilization is like a savings account for the town. So we can spend the free cash once it's certified, it has to be spent by June thirty, which is why we normally spend it at your town meeting. Whatever is not spent at the town meeting becomes part of what starts your free cash for the next fiscal year. Um, your capital stabilization is your savings account, which you have to vote to transfer out, to spend on capital payments.
Uh, we're back with FinCom, so Lori is our accountant, and has been fantastic help. Just to put it in layman's terms, everybody here, we all need to eat, but we don't all need to go out to dinner. So the way the FinCom kind of looked at it was free cash is something that's supposed to be used for special one-time expenses. You either put it into your stabilization, you put in your savings accounts, or use it to pay off something special, like a new fire truck. It's not supposed to be used for reoccurring costs. So before the school committee at the eleventh hour came in and cut almost sixty thousand out of their budget, we were actually using all our free cash. So it was like the town was going out to dinner, and you're spending every dollar in your wallet to go out to dinner. And before the school budget dropped by that fifty-nine thousand and change, we were actually stopping at the bank and taking money. taking money out of our savings account to go out to eat. And I don't know if anyone here runs their home budget that way, but the FinCom was extremely concerned about that. You need to eat, you don't need to go out to dinner. So, the FinCom has made a point, free cash should not be used for reoccurring expenses. The state guidelines, Lori's helped us with that immensely. The town department heads and the Selecting have worked very hard to put money aside into our four stabilization accounts, and we're very proud of that money. But again, if you are going out to dinner and you're stopping at the bank to take money out of your savings account, should you be going out to dinner? That's the way the FinCom approached it.
Hi, Lucy DeLeo, three twenty-five East Hill Road East. I started out with the letter that we got from FinCom about the 170,000 that we had in free, no, I'm sorry, 210,598 dollars in free cash. We're using 170,000 to balance our budget, and we're also, other articles, I subtracted the school stabilization and the, there were some others that came with it, but all the articles that we've had so far, if we pass this one, we're taking, we'll have maybe $13,000 in free cash. And we're not even done with the budget right now, the articles. We're not even done. So, we're spending all our savings. Is that, that's what I'm getting from listening tonight.
So, you started this year, twenty-four, with 447,000 certified free cash. You had a special town meeting in January where you spent, I think it was 174,000, I'm trying to hold my phone.
It's okay.
174,000 in free cash. You put a chunk of that into your stabilization account. The balance you have starting tonight was the 210,000 remaining in your free cash. So, yes, after you put the 170,000 into your budget, you spend the 33,000 potentially total on all of the articles tonight. You'll have about seven or so thousand left of unexpended free cash, which will start next year's free cash total off. You generally get about 300,000 to 350,000 free cash every year. Like it's
Where?
Certified free cash in this state. It's just your unexpended excess revenue from the town.
So, we'll be up using those figures, 7,000 left over. We'll get $350,000 more. So, we'll start the year with 357,000 free cash?
Once I close the
Thank you. Okay.
So, like Lori said, we are working towards, because it is not best practice to put any free cash in your budget. So, I'm working with the Finance Committee to stop that practice. So, every year, my goal is to get them to lower the free cash usage in the budget.
Thank you very much.
Maroschet, Gaffney Road. Just my observation, okay? When the select person reads the motion instead of, you know, to derive it from free cash, and then the moderator reads the motion to be voted on, and you say to take from a stabilization account, I'm losing something here, okay? Anything that's taken out of stabilization account does require two-thirds vote, but I'm not quite sure which, which area we're taking the funding out of. I mean, I don't know, any of you else hear the same thing? I mean, you hear one person read from free cash, and the other person read from a stabilization account?
Yes.
I just would like to see both on the same plane. Thank you.
Okay, Paul, the answer to your question. Motion, I have said stabilization. Motion was made for free cash, which is where it came out of. So, you're right, that wasn't the state yet. The motion is for free cash.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Both? Motion passes. Article fourteen, see if the town will vote pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E and a half, as most recently amended, to establish a revolving account from fire committees for firefighting expenditures involving training for the town during fiscal year 2025 and beyond, as for revolving funds listed in section F of the Revolving Fund Bylaws, Chapter twenty-three of the General Bylaws. Such funds not exceeding 25,000 during the fiscal year will take any action relative to there too. What would you like to do with this article?
I move that the town vote pursuant to General Laws, C forty, number forty-four, section fifty-three E and a half, to amend Chapter twenty-three of the General Bylaws, revolving funds by establishing a fire department revolving account as set forth in the warrant to be used to defray fire department training expenses, and by establishing an annual expenditure limit of $25,000.
Second.
It's been moved in second of the town vote pursuant to General Laws, Chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E and a half, to amend Chapter twenty-three of the General Bylaws, revolving funds by establishing a fire department revolving account as set forth in the warrant to be used to defray fire department training expenses, and by establishing an annual expenditure of 25,000. Is there any discussion?
Good evening. Tim Howell, Fire Chief, New Branch Road. I just wanted to explain this real quick. What we're looking for, it's a little deceiving with that number that says $25,000. As many of you in the room know, I'm required to do inspections on certain things in town, much like the electrical inspector, plumbing inspector, building inspector. Right now, all of that money, I give all to the general fund. What I was looking to do was set up a account that I can pull for our training fees. The mandates are crushing us from the state with stuff we're required to train on, and I'm looking for a way to kind of offset that a little bit. And just so you know what we're talking for numbers, in FY twenty-three, it was around $2,300. This year, I'm up to $3780 or say $3,800. It's roughly that much a year. You know, might go up to four grand. All depends how many houses sell in town. It's taking a real dive. I haven't done much for inspections lately. So, the number fluctuates back and forth, and that's all we're looking to do with it.
Chief, tell them how much you've cut this year.
Yeah, we also did, we were forced to cut our training budget by $5,000 this year to help bring it down, which again is cut by 5,000. And as the superintendent said from the schools, that's way more than that because the price of everything went way up. But we did cut our training budget 5,000 already. So, I'm just looking for a way to survive. Thank you.
Michelle Bertrand, North Brook River. How much is this permit fee? And is it for every time I want to have a fire? Or is it for the campground's gonna have it?
So, there's no fees for burning in town. I don't believe in charging people to burn. It's our right as Okamians to burn stuff. So, you know, we're not charged for that. What the only thing we charge for are state mandate inspections. When you buy or sell a house in Massachusetts, you're required to have a certificate. It's called 26F. You can't pass papers or close on a house without that. We now have to inspect solar panels on your roof, things like that, that, you know, cost time. It's my time going out there and doing it. So, there's no new fees. There's no, I'm not creating fees or anything. This is definitely
Why isn't specified fire permit not?
Because it's a fire permit I give you to, not a burn permit. It's a fire, anything fire department related. Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Both? Yes. Article fifteen, see if the town will vote to hear a report from the Town Hall Planning Committee or take any action relative there to... What would you like to do with this article?
I move that the town vote to hear a report from the Town Hall Planning Committee.
Second.
It's been moved in second to the town vote to hear a report from the Town Hall Planning Committee. Any discussion? All those in favor? Most in favor? Just Phil.
I felt war bass for the Town Hall Planning Committee. Board and Selectmen authorize the Town Hall Planning Committee to assess the current use and condition of the eighteen-seventy-five Memorial Town Hall and School and propose options for replacement or renovation. Standing Committee members are Tom Hughes, Chris Chu, Mike Brunel, Fred Garing, and me, Phil Warbass. The Town Hall is packed to capacity with no room for expansion. The reason this study is necessary is it's not in compliance with multiple state codes, including handicap access. Federal PDA regulations enacted in nineteen ninety made use of the second floor hall illegal without remodeling for full accessibility, complicating any work on the building. The well, septic system, and parking are shared with the Okam Church next door. The Town Hall was constructed in eighteen seventy-five as the center school with a Civil War Memorial Hall on the second floor. A classroom addition, which is now our voting room, was added in the nineteen forties. Several parent Okam residents either taught and went to school in this building until the new center school was built on Deacon Allen Drive and later expanded. Option one for this building is phase remodeling. The original memorial hall and center school was built with a coal fire, hot air furnace, no electricity, no indoor plumbing. Those systems have been added and modified bit by bit through a century and a half. They don't under meet current codes, and were so crisscrossed within the building that replacing was substantially modifying any system, which is not feasible. By relocating the tracul collectors office, a code mandated second interior stair and elevator could be built, basement to second floor, and the second floor could then be remodeled to do offices, required bathrooms, and all of the meeting hall space that's there now minus the stage, keeping the historic marble war memorial town that are there. However, into that second floor, you look at those tablets. Town Hall well, septic system, and parking area are shared with the Okam Church by town agreements. Remodeling the existing building would affect this sharing agreement, but it would have less impact than options two or three. Option two is in addition to the existing building. The site is too small to build anything larger than an addition containing an elevator and a legal interior second stair. Conceivably, if a structural survey finds the foundation and walls of the voting room are capable of supporting another floor, the roof structure could be lifted and the second floor built underneath it. Because the Town Hall well, septic system, and parking area are shared with the church, expansion of the existing Town Hall building would affect this sharing agreement, and there may not be enough land area to expand the septic system. Option three is complete remodeling all at once. This would be a gut rehab, and in order to do that, you would have to get everybody out of the building, all the stored equipment, all the people, everything. And there's no place to do that. So, the Climate Committee vote for that one is it's not a practical option. Option four is the construction of a complete new municipal building. Town owned land north of the church contains less than one acre. That's too small for municipal building with the driveway, parking, and septic. A town owned thirty-five acre nineteen-twenty-six grant from Alice Royton Town of Okam has used about five acres for highway fire department where we are located, separate police department building. We estimated thirty acres that are remaining. About half of that is used for the center school and the athletic field, the driveway, and parking. So, the area north of the school driveway, basically back there, appears to contain about fifteen acres, part of which could be used for a new municipal building, possibly including replacement of inadequate police station, a separate well and septic system from the school, driveway and parking separate from the school parking and driveway. If a new municipal building is constructed, the existing Town Hall building could possibly be offered for development sale testes for commercial conversion, perhaps to housing, with the requirement the exterior must remain historically unchanged. However, this will require ending connection with a well, septic, and parking that's now shared with the Okam Church. And that will create a huge financial burden for the parishioners, and it would require the legal town vote to rescind that original sharing agreement. Importantly, even though the landmark Town Hall is a key building in the Okam Village National Historic District, I don't know if you've seen the signs, it is not protected from demolition. Option five is relocation into the center school building. The center school is still serving its purpose, even though demographics have been reducing competency. If the school is repurposed as a municipal building, a police facility, the future can reasonably be expected to against some population vote, and a new school would then be required. The cost of the new school would far exceed the cost of a new municipal building. So, the Planning Committee vote for that is that it's not a favorable opinion. But in the cost and funding sources, the Planning Committee has considered conceptual cost estimates for option one, phase remodeling, in the range of like three million dollars, and option four, a new building in a different location, in the range of at least six to ten million dollars, depending on whether a police station's included. These estimates considered with public bid regulations add about thirty percent over the cost of a probable non-municipal project. We recommend that Okam should seriously reconsider adoption of the Community Preservation Act, a state option that, if adopted by voters of the town, enables the town to create a dedicated fund for important projects, including open space, housing, and historic reservation, which would be applicable to remodeling the town home. Of the three hundred and fifty-one Massachusetts cities and towns, more than a hundred and ninety-five have adopted the CPA since it was passed in two thousand, and towns probably as to adopt CPA have raised millions of dollars for their towns' municipal benefit. Funding for any of these options would require voter approval to include the town portion and grant approvals. Representatives of Donnie Batum and Senator Peter Grant have been asked about potential options to offset the taxpayer portion, possibly including a USDA rural development grant or loan, and possibly even including earmarks. After concepts, cost ranges, and potential funding of the developed and evolved options, the Planning Committee recommends a survey of town residents by door-to-door direct mail to determine the level of resident support before we go on with any progress. And finally, voter decisions for any one of these options, the long process will include our residents in each of the required series of town meeting votes, approval of one of the several options, board selection, board selectmen, selection of a state-approved architect-engineer fund, approval of architect-engineer conceptual design costs, and, for example, perspective. Town of Warren is currently paying an architect $75,000 for a conceptual design and vehicle safety complex. Finally, approval of architect-engineer design and cost estimate, and ultimately the approval of a construction bid and construction contract award. Structurally submitted, show it for us, the Town Planning.
Article sixteen, see if the town will vote to accept section nine A of Chapter thirty-two B of Massachusetts General Law, which states, shall the town pay one-half the premium cost payable by a retired employee for group life insurance and for group general or blanket hospital, surgical, medical, dental, and other health insurance, or take any action relative there to... What would you like to do with this article?
I move that the town vote to accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-two B, section nine A, which states, shall the town pay one-half the premium cost payable to a retired employee for group life insurance and for group general or blanket hospital, surgical, medical, dental, and other health insurance.
Second.
It has been moved in second to the town vote to accept Mass. General Laws, Chapter thirty-two B, section A, which states, shall the town pay one-half the premium cost payable by a retired employee for group life insurance and for group general or blanket hospital, surgical, medical, dental, and other health insurance. Any discussion?
Tim's got a presentation. Tim Howell, Graves Road, North Branch Chief. I want to start by saying, because there are a lot of wrongs and rights tonight, this has nothing to do with me. I'm up here as a citizen. I'm not your society chief. I will never be a town full-time employee. I have my own pension, my own benefits. So, I want to just put that facts. I'm getting a little upset in this town. I'm getting a little upset in this town with the rumor mill is going around, so I told the other department heads that this would affect and the other places affect, I'd be happy to do as a neutral party. I'm just going to give you facts and then turn it over to everyone else to discuss. So what is being proposed here, this is, as I mentioned, it's for the town to pay a portion of the retirees' health insurance. There's been a lot of grumms around town about giving people free health insurance. That is not at all what it is, not free health insurance. It's a portion, I believe it's 50/50 on this. Different municipalities have different things. I've worked in places that give you 100%. There's places that give 80%. So it depends on what your town adopts. Okan is predicting, projecting a 50/50. This falls under that 32B, Section 9, to find out. There are some eligibility things. One of the big things that I'm hearing around town, oh, people just going to come here right away and get health insurance for Tiger tomorrow. I don't want that need as a taxpayer. Again, we're on words, you have to be invested in the system first. Okan has some good rules in, he has incredible service. So again, it's not meant for qualified fighters, it's not meant for people to just work a couple hours here in town. This is for full-time employees only. They must be eligible for retirement. Someone can't just come in here, work three years, and then say, I want this benefit. It's you have to work to earn your full retirement from the pension system, and then again. When they retire, this is another thing we don't have, we can't, they're not going to double dip. When you retire and get this, you can't go work for another municipality and then get another benefit like this to somebody else. This is a one, one-shot deal. When you retire from public service, you're limited to 12, I think it's 1,200-ish hours a year that you can work for another municipality. It used to be 960, they just opted to try to keep up with the blade. So who currently has this? There's point few, quality teachers, I believe have a portion of this, like friends. Quality teachers have this. Again, Okan is not getting, this is part of that big thing we argued about earlier. So they're already in, so this isn't going to cost us anymore, because we already paid us to the teachers. A lot of city and towns, I hear it sounds a local fire chiefs, Lunenburg, Berlin, and Sterling, Brooklyn, North Brookfield has it. North Brookfield, we heard some crazy numbers, it's millions of dollars, they pay their teachers, so that's a different number. We're trying to compare apples to apples game. All right, this is what it's going to be. I have a list, you go on that website, go on State Insurance website, it lists every city and town, it's not like numbers, I can tell myself from the websites. One of the big things that I see here as an apartment head is I struggle to get qualified workers. I'm seeing the same thing happen. Chief Garrett cannot get police officers. Kevin and soon to be Harry, highly superintendent, they're not going to be able to fill this coming job. If you look right now, Tom Harpson, I drive trucks all the time, they had assigned for a year, looking for a labor provider to come. They're paying more an hour than we do. Both. We're not going to be able to keep up with that, so a way to keep a valuable town employee and make them feel welcome and wanted to keep on their whole career is to give them this small amount of money, we might not be able to pay them the, you know, $27, $28 an hour in other towns again. But we can pay this, and maybe it'll keep someone for longer and be a better investment for the town. And that was actually recommended by study that the town funded the, they hired the accounting firm to audit us, and that they actually recommended we do something like this to motivate and attract full-time employees. So as I just said, again, it's a way to get employees, it's a way to beat down, the town doesn't maybe give them more money, we can drop them a benefit like this. It's to keep people, and it gets us on the same playing field as other departments in town. This is probably the most important thing, these numbers, again, I didn't make these numbers up due to what I asked information to the board. So the current proposal that they have there is Okan will pay 50% of the lowest, please start to get like steep. Okan will pay 50% of the lowest cost HMO plan, under 65. The current rates for that, you can see right there, 40, 6031. The yearly cost for that will be 58, 32, 36. Then also there's the Medicare Supplement Plan, it would be 50% of that, current rate is 180, 34. So that'd be roughly $200, $200 a year. So for two people, you're looking around, say $8,000 a year. So good thing we have it, is we're going one player time, there's nothing projected for the next 10 years. So we have time to save, we have time to put money away. The next one at the end will be approximately 15 years. The most, I guess, now Okan has six full-time employees, that's the most that will ever be eligible for this. It's not a million dollar project, this is not for myself, again, I can't say this enough because I don't want it to be up yet. This is for the other employees in town. And if we do this, it would actually set up a, I don't want to call it trust fund, what's the proper word, a trust fund, where we would put money in every year. So eventually, when, when at the time we're not paying it, the fund would build up and help offset, so it's not going to be costing taxpayers, it might not cost us $8,000, but maybe you can offset that like for one, three or four years of trust. Questions go to other people.
Oh, Mike, Jim Albano, Old Term by Growth, my question is, is this an interim plan to carry through till Medicaid, or is this a permanent plan afterwards, supplement Medicaid forever until a person dies? I just, I want to understand what the policy time duration is.
Supplements Medicare. Supplements Medicare.
So it'll continue until, forever until the employee does, that's the, huh?
Forever.
Well, until the employee passes away. But it's supplemental up till the point of Medicare. It's an interim plan up till the point of Medicare, then supplemental Medicaid.
Medicaid.
Huh?
Have to be on Medicaid.
Medicaid, yeah.
To be 65. And have to be retired.
Oh.
Oh, you guys go.
Yeah, Jimmy, you have to be 65.
To start.
Starting.
Okay.
Nobody under 65 is eligible for this.
Okay, that was my question.
Thank you.
Orocheff from Gaffney Road, with moderator's permission, could I direct a question to the fire chief?
That's okay with him.
Chief, listen, this year's budget basically ate up all of the town's available forecasted revenue until the school committee from Corbin actually did a major cut, which was like $59,000. For us, that's a big deal, okay? For the school, it was even a bigger deal, because it amounts to them cutting about $400,000, because we're 13% of the assessment. So I thank you very much for that cut, because I know it was big. But to the fire chief, you had a cut in your budget of $5,000 for training wages. And I'm asking you, because there were several cuts in this budget, for this budget to even be considered somewhat payable by the amount of revenue that we have and about the amount of free cash that we had, would you think that this particular program is more important than your training wages? I mean, I could list all the other cuts, I'm telling, there were several cuts in this budget. This budget, it's not a, a level service budget like we had last year. There's been many, many cuts, and one thing that kind of kept us, I had just a little bit above water is the fact that the select board had American Rescue Plan funds, which paid for an awful lot of town maintenance this year. If we had to pay for this maintenance out of town money, we would be diving very big into capital stabilization. And I can give you some examples of that. $30,000 for a water system for the library, $6,000 for roof maintenance for the library. It just goes on. I mean, $70,000 went into those cemeteries for tree work and for building an arch for one of the entrances. All these things, if you added them all up for what we have for available funds, yes, we're at the tipping point in town. People can say we're not, but yes, we are. And to see things going into stabilization to be funded is kind of a sad way of going backwards. So again, to the chief, would you, would you put the priority on, on getting these other benefits for retirees versus being able to pay the regular line items for a basic budget?
Phil, thank you, he's got a very valid point. And again, this isn't my fight, but it's my opinion, this is me as a taxpayer and a fire chief. I value my employees. I do everything I can. I've got, I'm very fortunate to have roughly 18 to 20 active call members, and it's because I try to treat them like I would a family member, and I treat them right. And seeing as a department head, I think it would cost us more in the long run if we start having a turnover. We're going to lose our police chief, we're going to lose our police officers if they can go to other towns and get more money. If we have to pay the highway, the new highway labor, $2 an hour more to be competitive with Hubbardston, that's probably more than $8,000 a year. I don't know what $2 an hour more between the two labors would be, but it probably works out to more than $8,000. So again, I understand budgets and tight, that $5,000 is hitting me, you know, hitting me real hard that I get cut my budget. I understand, I'm just looking as a, more as a taxpayer, how do we keep the people we have, because it costs a lot more to train new employees.
Okay, the other thing that hasn't been mentioned on this article, all right, it's not mandated, it's not required, and it's not necessary. Okay, we, we need to take care of our basic needs first, and if we vote to sin, it can never be called back, it's forever. Repaying is forever. And I have a copy of a letter from the auditing firm that did the audit six years ago, and I just want to read a real small paragraph, which deals directly with what this is about, okay? And this is a review after they did their audit in, in their study of the municipal practices in town on financing. And then what it says is, since the town has not accepted the applicable statutes which statute regarding post-employment benefits for its retirees, the town does not currently offer other post-employment benefits, or OPEB, to its retirees. Accordingly, the town isn't faced with significant future costs related to these personnel costs. Now, I didn't bring up North Brookfield, okay, but North Brookfield was brought up. They're about 4,600 residents, they're two and a half times our size, okay? But they also have a very large commercial base. It's got vibrant soul factory, grocery store, banks, several restaurants, gas stations. All of these commercial entities put money in to help North Brookfield be able to pay for their operation. We don't have that here, okay? We have basically just a residential community, and no residential community would ever get involved in this. This is totally ludicrous. So I, I think we should just plan on hoping that we can pay for our basic services, not drive people out of town because, you know, these tax bills are going to keep going up and up. Why add on, you know, an unnecessary financial burden? And that's exactly what this is, and it grows exponentially every single year. It's not just, you know, a few things. So anyways, I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Hi, Kelly Watts, Adams Road. So I want to echo a little bit of what the fire chief said, and I feel like I'm going to repeat what I said last year. And I'm going to disclose with you now, I am related to somebody that would benefit from this, has nothing to do with that. It has to do with the fact that I am prideful to be from Okan. I'm prideful to be from Okan because of the services that we receive. I can go to work and, you know, we talk, and just, this is just an example, but we talk about, oh my God, when I hit North Brookfield, the roads were crap. Okan's roads are great. Our fire chief, on off-duty, he was home, I had a situation with my daughter, he came out of his house, and he, he met me over at the station to protect my child. So I just feel like that as residents, we have to look forward to the recruitment, the retention of qualified employees that will stay with us, that will know our town, know our residents, love it like we do and care for it like we do. I'm glad that there were numbers this year, there were no numbers last year. And what, what does $2 an hour come out to? We work, what, is it 2,044 hours a year, something like that? So you're not talking a lot of money, but when you're looking at a competitive group of potential employees that are going to make their decisions based on honestly what we have to offer, and what we have to offer isn't those high rates, but this benefit is, is something that we can be proud to offer and, and continue to draw those people in. So I would just ask, you know, think about that in terms of, you know, the pride we have in our town and wanting our, our employees to continue to represent that for us and to continue to allow us to have that pride. So, thank you.
Brad Taylor, East Road, the true cost of this insurance has really not been explained in its entirety. As Paul said, once this is voted in, it is ours forever. We can never get rid of it, and the select boards coming down the road have the ability to change the parameters by which this insurance is offered. Tony Roselli, Roselli and Clark, when this first came about last year, was asked a question about this, and his quote was, in a hamlet the size of Okan, you should avoid OPEB at all cost. It is an unfunded liability. The actuarial report that's going to go along with this is $2,000. They did, they failed to mention that in the little report we had. They're going to fit, they're going to fund that with OPEB, oppo money. But next, next actuarial report that will come along, and, and believe me, when we start borrowing money as a town, the actuarial reports and the, and the audits are going to increase because the banks are going to require it. And when that happens, the actuarial reports will continue. So that cost is unfunded. You can't, you can't fund who's going to retire, that's the problem with this. Granted, it's only, it's only one employee right now, but it's, it's the employee and his wife. You're going to pay for both of those people for the rest of their lives, partly because she's younger than him and not under Medicare yet. She will go on Medicare, but the cost is going to be there. The costs are going to continue to rise with retirement assessments as retirement goes along. So all of these costs continue to escalate that the taxpayer is going to have to pick up. I don't know how many people here have their insurance paid for after they retire, but I'll guarantee you, it's not everybody. So we, we, this is, the employees have done a great job, I agree with that. And I, and I don't think for the amount of work that this town requires, they're, they're that drastically underpaid, they've got the use of town vehicles, they're pretty lenient with their vacations, nobody is really upset with being employed here. So, so I think that attracting new firefighters, they're all part-time, that's not going to count for anything. So I think that we ought to think twice about adopting a policy that's going to cost us money and money that we don't have right now and may not have going forward to pay for this stuff that we don't need to pay for. Thanks.
Give some real facts.
Thank you.
Thank you, and then I'll speak.
Hi, again, Lori Darkus, Town of Okan. Not everyone knows, I'm an ex-sourced Town of Okan, so I, I work for a private firm, I do this for six other towns. You are actually one of my only towns that does not have retiree benefits or Okan. So just going to give some, some information based on what I see in our town, the actual facts for this. So the upfront costs for this would be approximately $8,000 for the health insurance for one retiree plus a spouse, which is currently in your fiscal year 25 budget, because it was estimated based on how many employees we currently had on health insurance. So there would be no increase in costs for fiscal year 25. Like Brad said, it does require an actuarial study if we chose to go ahead with this. A cost for an actuarial study for a larger town, which would be a town that has 20-plus employees on a plan, is anywhere in the range of $5,000 to $6,000. The state allows you to do a small-town actuarial study, which is if you have less than that for employees. I did one two years ago for the town of Windsor, which I work in. It costs $2,000, I completed half of it, and outside for completed the other half of it. After you complete the full actuarial, which was $2,000, you do an update every year, and it costs $600. So you include that in the audit every year. The additional cost, if you pass this article and then the next one, is set up the OPEB trust. The OPEB trust is used if the town ever could not pay for the employee benefit out of the 25 or 26 or 27 budgets. So you set up a trust, it's in perpetuity, so you would put money away, such as in a stabilization account, it's a savings account, to put away for retiree benefit, other post-employment benefits to be used in the future, which is where the unfunded liability comes from that goes in your audit. Out of the, however many towns in Massachusetts that actually are contributing to OPEB trusts, there are only two that are fully funded. I believe it's Pepperell and Everett or Wellesley. No other town is fully funded, they're never going to be, it's an unfunded liability. It shows up in your audit that way, and the base looks Um, it shows up in your audit that way, and the base look at it as fine. You would want to put in probably about five thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars a year. If we could afford it, if you can skip a year, there's no problem doing that. That was about it.
Reoccurring costs.
So the reoccurring costs would only be the amount for the employee health insurance every year, which would be approximately eight thousand dollars, until you have somebody else retire. And at that time, we would reassess it, and then we'd increase the health insurance. And after that person um has a drop in work, an increase in age, then the insurance would drop as well because then they would be on the medex plan.
I have a question. The cost of the dental and the life insurance, because I understand that was one of the parts of it.
What's your name and where are you from?
It says right here.
Say your name.
I have a question about the cost. I believe one, one of the papers we saw, it said that, um, well, it says dental and health insurance, and I believe one time it said life insurance. So that's been, is it the part that you've been mentioning today? The dental insurance that the people would.
The eight thousand dollar figure covers everything, including dental. Put it all together, so that eight thousand dollar covers all the dental as well as the life, excuse me, the health insurance. We do not offer life insurance to employees.
Orocha, just as a note of interest to everybody, we are involved in another fund, okay, it's Worcester County Retirement. Our current liability in that fund is about a million dollars. Our assessment this year into that pension fund was approximately eighty-six thousand dollars. Okay, and what are we responsible for right now? Maybe two pensions? It's not like we're not trying to support our employees, okay? I don't think any employee has left this town because he's not getting more benefits than just pension. I think there's far other reasons why people are leaving. And I, again, I don't think we need to support these benefits that are totally unnecessary. We also, this building that we're in, we're still paying for this building, okay? Whatever it's going to cost for, whatever the committee's decided going to remedy our town offices, it's going to be quite expensive. We're paying off another seven hundred thousand dollars on a fabulous piece of fire equipment, and it's a good thing for everybody. This particular article is only going to assist maybe not even one percent of the amount of residents in this town. Okay, I think we need to spend our money more on the people that, you know, encompass the majority. If you look at all the cuts set on the budget, okay, I mean, you cut parks and recreation, cut, cut their budget right in half, this is a group of volunteers that put on events for the public, for recreation, for, you know, so people can socialize, you took half of that away. Okay, I mean, we took five thousand dollars out of, out of the fire department. We took, I think, six thousand dollars on a highway, which was money on a light on them for paying street signs and and, you know, painting road signs and 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 street lines. I mean, if we can't afford to even do safety things, I don't know why people are looking forward to trying to get a free benefit that they don't really need, deserve or need. It's wonderful to get benefits if you can afford it. But right now, there are so many other priorities in this town, this should be just totally walked away from.
Cindy Caria, Old Turnpike Road, and yes, I am the younger wife. And, you know, I don't even have to, even if you vote it in, I do not have to take advantage of that because I can go and find a HMO, a Blue Cross, whatever, policy that might be cheaper than what I can get it through the town. It's possible, I can, I do not have to accept that benefit. But the man who's retiring at almost sixty-eight years old, he was only needing the, what is that called, the medics? Which is a small fragment of money, little bit of money that you guys are helping him out with. But let's look at all the teachers, let's look at the line items in that longevity stipends, they get this same benefit. I know you don't believe it, but they do. People who've worked for the state get a similar benefit. And when you talk about Paul, his Worcester County Retirement, he's paid into that. He is paid into that. So don't say that we're paying his retirement, came out of his paycheck, okay? So I know I'm a little animated right now, because I've listened for the past six months, everybody beat him up. And thank you, Brad, for saying he doesn't work hard, has too many vacations, and hasn't given to this town. That is not fair. He's given his life to this town. That is exactly what you said.
I think Chief, I think Chief Gearing would like to say something, he's in line, and he would be eligible for.
Actually, yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
And also have a motion for a paper ballot board, is there a second on that? All in favor of a paper ballot? All those in favor moving the question? We'll go to the vote.
I'm going to go with Rose.
Thanks for the offer. Hey, I'm just going to just move. Yeah, that's, I got a question on that. Yeah, so we can't change what you're. But the motion, you'll think, and wrote it, so I can't remember, check it scratch, but for twenty-one, it's to say.
Lost about fifteen votes on the most recent call. I'm sure they'll be back.
Who's that say right there? Okay, they make you talk to, but I'm. Said it didn't include it?
Yeah, you have to list all the people worded, we don't.
But again, I'm reading.
Sure. Is it a substantive issue, is the file ought to be different, is it?
I just think it needs to be more focused on details. I just think it needs to be studied in more detail and reconsidered.
They can tell those.
It's so clear, yes, vote will pass the motion, no vote, it will fail. Want to make sure everybody knows it? Yes, vote will pass the motion. No vote, it will fail.
Yeah, certainly, I mean, in this, having the position as anyone to make, to make a motion.
Miss Nash is here and then say. Can I just say, move the town? By cast, yes. And that's. So I follow the lack of details and lack of ties.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that in any moment. You showed me, I think, because I, I drafted the replacement. So. And obviously, however, folks, it's fine. Because I understand the point I'm making, for sure, and I don't necessarily disagree. This version of the bylaws. Set personnel policies, sort of amend them more freely than state laws. But you're certainly right that that creates a question of what are.
Like, they don't like my.
Yeah, got a thesaurus in your desk. What fancy word can I use today?
Dawn, are we going to be the last? I'm assuming. We lost one, like. You don't have to vote.
Right now.
Like going to the ballot, you don't have to vote. But that's.
Yeah, they can get up there.
I know. A lot of people are in a situation that, right, they don't give.
I'm watching.
Not be watched and criticized if you don't vote.
They always tell me I'm. But I, but I vote.
I wish we could give you benefits, and I, but I also know the realistic.
At that moment, they're not.
John Jacob said, well, not the first, it's just, um.
All I have to say is. And very often, they not. I've had a good time with teachers. I've had a good year with.
Not everyone can say that, so.
I can't just.
Yeah, and I, I feel bad because of police chiefs coming. Likely a lot of supportive voters. You know, I guess we'll see about the math, it makes a difference.
Is there any way they can hold the count until the guys get back to vote? They can't. Keep this open and everybody. They can't take it out of order, so the guys that had the lead can vote. They take it out of order, wait till the guys come back.
I don't, like, I understand.
They came to vote.
Right, it's been, it's been called to the vote.
Numbers of the fire department. The guys that took off the.
Yeah, I mean, sort of, they want to vote, so. gave them a chance.
Well, right, yeah.
They only just went back and maybe do some things, it's for the fire. It's for the fire, it's for their health.
Don't know. Yeah, I, the, the issue is, if we were to end it in a different context, it would be, asking people to vote like this would be, I think, the equivalent to asking to hold the vote so that everyone in the meeting can call their mother, brother. The idea is the meeting is, is open, be attended.
It's coming. The last article.
I need to make a second ultimate.
I, I don't know whether who's.
Deal with what you have, yeah. Because, yeah, it, it creates a slippery slope. Oh, well, we, we held it because we watched. You know, ultimately, it can be. That doesn't, that doesn't. They're also, you don't know what. So I'll look.
Oh, my.
The issue is that with this, because it's a.
I don't know.
I'm sorry, but it sounds hard. That information, but I don't know, like, the communication. I'll vote, if not, I'll.
Yeah, I should have sent you a whole. I have not, like, I hope to see. Why? Oh, you're right there, Charlie.
We're so watching, Sam.
Sorry, sorry, talking about. Lift your foot. Lift your foot.
Oh, you said microphone, I'm looking at this one, not that one.
It isn't, I was moving around that much evidently I was.
So fashion likes go this way, so I think they might be telling me that. Maybe a portion of them anyway.
Is allowed to vote?
Yes.
Oh, you already did?
No.
Oh, okay.
Three acres, three acres.
So I didn't.
Thank you.
Get back to business again. Ball was sixty no, sixty eight yes. Motion passed. Article seventeen. Steve, the town will vote to accept Massachusetts general law, chapter thirty-two B, section twenty, and establish an other post-employment benefits liability trust fund effective July first, two thousand and twenty-four, or taking the acts relative thereto. What would you like to do with this article?
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of general laws, C, thirty-two B, section twenty, and establish another post-employment benefits liability trust fund effective July first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
It has been moved in second with the town vote to accept the provisions of general law, chapter thirty-two B, section twenty, and establish another post-employment benefits liability trust fund effective July first, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, John Diamond himself. Where's money gonna come for the trust fund?
Someone wanna answer that?
Sure. You can use free cash as an article every year. You can transfer from stabilization, like you said. You can put in what the town can afford. So you can put in five to ten thousand dollars a year. You can vote to skip a year. It's whatever the town can afford. You just wanna look like you're contributing something. An approximate liability for the town, a town this size, with the amount of employees you have, would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about three hundred and forty thousand dollars would be your total unfunded liability. That's just a good guess based on other towns that I work in of similar size. So you could put in an amount of free cash every year or just try.
Well, I'm spending all this free cash to try and pay bills. So now you're looking at spending some more money to throw it in something else.
Right. We just, we did drop a significant amount of money into our stabilization account at the special town meeting in January.
Well, you're just throwing money around again.
It's just basically moving it from one stadium's account to another. You know what I mean, Janie? No.
Great, good night.
What is, Michelle Vertrand, Northbrook Field Road, what's the amount is being transferred this time? And we're.
There's, so we're not, even if we're voting on this this year. So this is just to establish the trust fund. The amount general law requires that you establish a trust fund for other post-employment benefits. For this year, there's absolutely no money going into it. So this is something that you would vote to put money into next fiscal year.
Does she have, you know, money ready?
Yes, no money, just establishing.
So if it helps numbers-wise, as Lori said, it's gonna be an unfunded liability, about over three hundred thousand dollars. The FinCom had discussed it. We decided we're gonna start by funding the about eight, ten thousand every year. After we do, maybe three thousand dollars to figure out how much that fund is gonna cost. I thought it was a five hundred dollar three-year fee.
Every other year.
Every other year. And then, of course, your health insurance does go up by two or three percent every year. Your health insurance goes up by six, eight, twelve percent of the year. And so the FinCom is gonna try to take more and more money out of free cash to fund it. Because as long as we can put eight thousand, ten thousand, twenty thousand away, we'll be in better shape in ten, twenty, thirty years when most towns are now over a million dollars in liability. You know, another way to look at it, it's not more like frowned, but basically it's like credit card debt. We're never gonna pay it off, but it's there.
Wonderful.
I hope that helps explain what you're voting for.
Non-credit card, that shouldn't be voted.
Wow. Is there any other discussion?
Don't think they quite understood.
No other discussion. All those in favor? All those? Motion passed. Article eighteen, see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts general law, chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause fifty-six, to authorize the Board of Assessors to grant real personal property tax abatements exemptions up to one hundred percent for total tax assessment, the benefits of Massachusetts National Guard, and reservists on active duty in foreign countries for the fiscal years in which they perform such service subject to eligibility criteria established by the Board of Assessors. The authority to grant abatements under this book shall expire after two years of acceptance, unless extended by a vote of town meeting. Or taking the action relative thereto. What would you like to do with this article?
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts general law, chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause fifty-six, as was read by the moderator.
Second. Have a comment?
Hang on. Get into the motion and then tell it. It has been moved in second with the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts general law, chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause fifty-six, and ready on water. Any discussion?
Peter Clifford, Lincoln Road. So has the eligibility requirements been written? And if so, could someone explain them? Secondly, does this require active duty on the part of National Guard members? Or is, or by simply serving in the Guard, do you qualify? And thirdly, does this require, the authorization expires in two years. Do we have to re-vote on this in two years' time?
Somebody link the answer?
Diane Peterson, the assessor. So yes, we do have to vote this in every two years. We do not, we have not voted in the eligibility requirements yet. Most of them have to do with income. So based on your household income, you do need to be active duty overseas with qualifying documentation from your commanding officer and other paperwork is required too. And we could explain that to anybody that's in the Guard that falls into that category. But because we're kind of living in troubled times, we thought maybe this was a good time to bring this forward.
Okay. I would just note for the record that the warrant doesn't state that members of the Guard have to be on active duty. It says, it says, it says reservists on active duty. It's a matter of construction. I would submit that, 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 that section is vague. That's all I have to say.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? A pause? Motion passes. Article nineteen, see if the town will vote to increase the profit intention sent in the amount of benefits in accordance with Massachusetts general law, chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause twenty-two, from four hundred dollars to eight hundred dollars. Maximum allowed by Massachusetts general law, chapter seventy-three, section four of the Acts of nineteen eighty-six. As amended by chapter one twenty-six of the Acts of nineteen seventy-eight, we'll take any action relative thereto. What would you like to do with this article?
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts general law, chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause twenty-two, as was read by the moderator.
Second.
It has been moved in second with the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts general law, chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause twenty-two, as read by the moderator. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Proposed? Article twenty, see if the town will vote to expend the sum of money from the police cruiser stabilization account for a new cruiser replacement or taking the action relative thereto. Would you like to do with this article?
I move that the town vote to transfer fifty-five thousand dollars from the police cruiser stabilization account for a replacement police cruiser.
Second.
It has been moved in second to transport to the police cruiser stabilization account, placement for police cruiser. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All those?
I believe when you transfer money out of a stabilization account, it requires a two-thirds vote. I may be wrong, but I believe that's.
Through you, moderator. That has previously been the case for, it's time, sorry. I'm Jared Collins and I'm town council. So it is a recent change that transfers out of a special purpose capitalization account, or excuse me, special stabilization account, do not require a two-thirds vote. So transfer out of general stabilization would still require two-thirds, but any special purpose, which would include a police cruiser replacement, that stabilization count would just require a certain majority.
Any other discussion? Article twenty-one, see if the town will vote to amend chapter eight, section one of the general bylaws by deleting the struck through language in bold as follows. There shall be a finance committee consisting of five legal voters of the town who shall be appointed by the moderator as herein out and provided. No elected or appointed town employee should be eligible. Town employee should be eligible to serve on said committee. This is the bold part that's being changed. Members of the finance committee may serve on uncompensated CADHOT or vitally multiple member bodies, but shall be prohibited from serving on multiple member bodies for which compensation is provided. Would you like to do with this article?
I move that the town vote to amend chapter eight, section one of the general bylaws by adding the bold-faced language as printed in the warrant and read by the moderator.
Second.
Kind of confusing, but if we go into motion, they're adding. That, that language will be added. I agree. That's what the article says. It's been moved in second with the town vote to amend chapter eight, section one of the general bylaws. By adding the bold-faced language. Print it in the warrant.
Delete it.
And read by the moderator here.
Matt Purnell, Maple Street. Just looking at the way this is written. It says, "By deleting the struck-through language in bold as follow." Seeing as there's no struck-through language on the article, there's only underline. Is that a mistake in the way it's written? Or was there supposed to be struck-through language from the way the bylaw was originally passed in town? And the new is the addition? And we don't have the struck-through language? I think that's the question. And.
Make a motion. We tabled.
Second.
You have a motion to second to table article twenty-one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All those? Voting the table passes. Article twenty-two, move that the town vote to amend the general bylaw, chapter six, personnel rules. See, article twenty-two, see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaw by deleting chapter six, personnel rules and regulations in its entirety and replacing it with the following. Chapter six, personnel bylaw, history adopted by the town vote in June third, two thousand and twenty-four annual town meeting. Article one, section one, purpose and intent. In accordance with Massachusetts general law, chapter forty-one, section one oh eight C, the purpose of this chapter is to establish fair and equitable personnel policies and symptom of personnel administration based on federal principles that ensure uniform efficient application of these laws. Section two, application. All employees of the town, including employees of the public library and all employees of appointed or elected boards, shall be subject to the provisions of this chapter and personnel policies adopted pursuant thereto. To the extent that the terms of any collective bargaining agreement conflict with any provision of this chapter, personnel policies adopted pursuant thereto, the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement shall prevail. Section three, adoption of policy. The board of selection shall provoke personnel policies that define rights, benefits, and obligations of employees subject to this chapter. Section four, personnel system. The personnel policies adopted pursuant to this chapter shall establish a personnel system which shall include, need not be limited to, the following elements. Method of administration. System which assigns responsibility to the personnel system, including maintenance of personnel records, implementation of effective recruitment and selection processes, maintenance of classification and confrontation plans, oversight of the application of policies, periodic review and evaluation of the personnel system. Recruitment and selection policy. Central record-keeping system, rights and obligations of employees and other elements of a personnel system that are deemed appropriate and necessary by the board of selection. What would you like to do with this article?
I move that the town vote to pass over this article for further study and be reconsidered at the special town meeting.
Second.
I need a motion.
Passed it all. Lucy, what'd you just read?
I move that the town vote to pass over the article for further study and be reconsidered at special town meeting.
It's been moved in second with the town vote to pass over this article, further study, reconsider. Say at special town meeting.
At the special town meeting.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Motion passes. Do you need to do finance committee? Yep.
Very seconding.
Move in second to adjourn. All those in favor?